Okay, welcome to the East Hampton City Council Ordinance Committee, December 12th, 2022, time is 6:00 PM. Called to order, Council Riley and myself are present. Do we have any minutes to approve?
No, I'll have them ready for the next meeting.
Fair enough. And public speak time is going to be a little different today. So unless you have something that you'd like to talk about that's not on the agenda, then this is the time to talk about it. But if you have something that is on the agenda, which I imagine you came here for something that's on the agenda, then what I'll do is, at the appropriate time, I'll open up public comment for that item. I will ask that you keep it, the scope relatively narrow to the, what is in the ordinance speak in order to save our time and to, you know, give us relevant feedback to what we're trying to do. And so that being said, we don't have any new business. And we do have some old business that is in the form of the vacant storefront ordinance. I did send the draft that we kind of preliminarily approved last time to all the stakeholders. I imagine you got it as well. Council President, you got it as well. And I got no feedback. So I did send the invitation out to give feedback tonight where we could discuss it. But since I didn't get any, I think it's probably in its form that is going to be ready to go to the city attorney so we can bring it to the full council, which means that our action tonight would be to vote to send it to the full council pending attorney review. And so I'm happy to have a motion to that effect if you're so obliged.
So I move to send the previously approved language to the city attorney pending full city council, or excuse me, opposite way, to the full city council pending attorney review. Thank you.
Perfect. Now I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes. So, okay, so you have the current version. Perfect. Thank you very much. And then let me just see if I can make this go down. So vacant storefront is moving. Ordinance Review Committee's final report. And since we just passed a suite of changes, there's a couple of changes that we haven't gotten to yet. We will kind of, once we have a lull in our agenda, we'll come back to that, so we'll leave that on our agenda. And then we have the amend Chapter 6, Section 621, Single-Use Plastics, which is scheduled for our public hearing on Wednesday. And so we should be good for that. And that brings us to Counselors Ehr.
Oh.
Yeah, so we don't have to wait too long before you are up.
Do you have the public speak first, or?
Well, I would say, I mean, as far as public speak, what I would like to have you do is introduce what you've introduced to the committee. You know, give us whatever information that you have, rationale, whatever. And feel free to take the floor. Give us, you have as much time as you need to give us, you know, your information. And then, once that happens, Council Riley and myself will ask questions. And once we have those questions kind of answered, then what I'll do is I'll just open it up to comment and then close it and then be on our way.
Okay, so obviously, as everyone here is familiar, we had introduced the previous ordinance under this chapter and section that basically looked to create local enforcement around deceptive advertising practices by crisis pregnancy centers. And I think after some discussion, we removed it without prejudice, mostly because of the, some of the inherent complications about local enforcement, small city with a small health department, despite the fact that that same model has been established in numerous other cities across the country and in one place in the Commonwealth. And so I want to talk a little bit about what the new language isn't before I talk about what it is, because I think that's important. Throughout this discussion, and there's been a lot of conversation about a religiously affiliated entity here within the city, the Bethlehem House. And at the time that the initial language was written and submitted, I wasn't familiar with it nor were any of the other stakeholders familiar with this. And certainly, it appeared to people that somehow this language was written in response to the presence of this entity, this establishment within the city. And I think we've made that clear multiple times in the public conversation that the prior language and certainly the current language doesn't, it's not targeting the Bethlehem House. The definitions utilized clearly establish that the Bethlehem House is not, probably wouldn't fall under the auspices of this proposed ordinance. And I think that's been repeated enough times, so I want to keep repeating it because it's important to reinforce that so that anyone listening knows that. And then subsequently, anyone who is listening and knows that and continues to say that is purposely spreading disinformation about this language. The other things that have been brought up is that this is an attack on religion, that I or other people who support this are anti-Christian. And this is secular language. And we'll get into the purpose of the secular language. This isn't targeting anyone's beliefs. It's targeting certain practices as well as legally available services within the Commonwealth. And to an extension too, and I want to address this, it's been mentioned to me that my own religious beliefs were brought into this conversation and the language behind this. And that stuff stays at home. My work here and our work here, I think, should purely be predicated upon the separation of church and state. And the work that we do here should be purely secular. So I think that's important as well. The other thing, because there has been case studies, or cases, prior court cases that have been mentioned, the other thing that this language does not do is compel anybody to seek any services that we're talking about. It doesn't compel anyone to offer any sort of messaging. It doesn't, and it doesn't, it doesn't, it allows people to practice their political and religious beliefs in peace. It doesn't address that at all. So what does it do? So in July 2022, Governor Baker signed into law an act expanding protections for reproductive and gender-affirming care. And that basically establishes a number of provisions in the wake of Dobbs to protect people within the Commonwealth who are seeking reproductive or gender-affirming care. And the problem with that is that there's not a lot of provisions or prescriptions at the local level to facilitate those protections. And so the fair access piece, which is basically borrowed from Salem, Massachusetts, who passed that and proposed that, the current mayor there, but soon to be our lieutenant governor of the Commonwealth, Mayor Driscoll, basically created kind of almost mirror language to what exists within the now GL that was formed to make sure that either residents or non-residents, in this case in East Hampton, who are seeking or have engaged in legally available reproductive healthcare and gender-affirming care have their information protected. And if employees of the city who are aware of or have access to that information, if they seek to use it to bring any sort of legal action or criminal action against those people via other states that they may reside in, that can be referred to our Director of Personnel to deal with as they feel appropriate. And it's important to note that, again, that this is not, we're not litigating the concept of access to contraception, access to abortion, access to gender-affirming care. We are protecting the access that's legally available within the Commonwealth to reproductive healthcare and gender-affirming care. These are rights that are protected. And our people, either live here or visit here, should be protected by the choices that they make within the city. And our employees should respect that. And in addition, we revise the language around limited service or crisis pregnancy centers. And there's a long preamble as well as a series of findings. And the important findings to note are that there is an invested state interest in known and established practices by crisis pregnancy centers specifically around deceptive advertising. There's also known and established practices by crisis pregnancy centers in some of their messaging. But again, we cannot address that messaging. As we discussed previously numerous times, that's where we start compelling speech and get into issues around the First Amendment. But we can offer consumer protection and we can protect people's access to legally available services within the Commonwealth. And so how does the state have an invested interest in this? Well, Attorney General Maury Healy, soon to be Governor Maury Healy, issued a consumer warning this last summer. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health has issued a consumer warning. Our public insurance, MassHealth, has issued consumer warnings all around CTCs. So the state has a vested interest in protecting the consumer's access to state, legal state, gender-affirming and reproductive healthcare. And there's a clear investment by the state in this. And all we're asking the city council to do is to make that state-available information, that government speech known by mandate within the city. So to post prior reports and any future reports by the Attorney General or Department of Public Health or MassHealth as to, you know, any advisories that they have. And to facilitate or make people aware that there is a complaint process to the state for people who feel that they may have experienced deceptive practices, deceptive advertising practices. It doesn't create any local enforcement. It doesn't create any local enforcement. That's the most important thing. It just makes available, or through a mandate by the city council, through ordinance, that this information, that this information is available, because a lot of people don't know about this. Unfortunately, the state legislature had passed a earmark for a million-dollar educational campaign with this veto by Governor Baker. But it's important, especially since it's clear on the state level that there are concerns about this. And so, much like what we did in our wage theft ordinance, where we didn't create local enforcement, we just created local facilitation around wage issues that could be reported to the Attorney General. We're not even doing any reporting. We're just letting people know that they can report this. And that's, I think, some other things I think that are important just to note. So when we were first, when we were working on our prior language, Reproductive Equity Now was kind of the preeminent organization for reproductive justice and reproductive healthcare access within the state, were hesitant, I think rightfully so, around the initial language, which I think, again, created some kind of complicated mechanics about not only making determinations about deceptive advertising, but also enforcing that. And then, since that time, with the revision of this language, they have rolled out a municipal toolkit, which I don't know, I think I've shared it.
Sorry.
And which includes a number of interesting ideas from municipalities, including the Salem language, Salem, Massachusetts, around fair access, but also around what we're calling safe access. And again, that organization is mostly, they're more focused on education and empowerment and protection. And I think it's valuable to note that they feel comfortable with including that language in their toolkit. You know, their president of their organization, Rebecca Harholder, is now on the Healing Your Still Transition Team. And so I think that, because there's been some questions, I think unofficially, about, you know, what are the feelings at the state level? And I think it's fair to assume that they're comfortable with these concepts to bring these to the state level in terms of concepts for municipal enforcement and engagement with the state around these issues. And I have to say, I'm really proud that they recognize the work that the city's doing as well as a potential model going forward. So I think that's it.
Counsel Riley, do you have any questions?
I mean, I do. So here are some things that I'm kind of hung up on. So the first piece is in the violations section. Any city employee found to have violated this article shall be subject to the disciplined policies of the city of East Hampton at the direction of the Director of Human Resources. And any city contractor found to have violated this article shall be subject to review and potential termination of contract. So first, I want to like get out of the way. From a philosophical standpoint, every bit of this ordinance change, I agree with. I will always respect reproductive rights. And I will always come down in the favor of people of East Hampton. So here's where this becomes complicated. What are we saying specifically for these violations? Is this that, you know, we have the section about the East Hampton Police Department shall not be remanded, transferred, or extradited to another jurisdiction? This whole section, I understand, is basically saying the police department cannot interfere with a person's right to access reproductive care. I totally get that. For the Health Department, so the role here is suggesting that the Health Department would be required to submit information to residents about their rights to report these violations to the state. If there is an employee in the Health Department who feels that there is a religious objection to engaging in this process? Now, me personally, I don't think that religion belongs in public service. I think it needs to be separate. However, our judicial system has found multiple times, over and over and over again, that this is a gray area that is long away from being settled. I can see a scenario where an employee of the Health Department can object to this policy. And if they are penalized by the Human Resources Department, then they have the right to sue the city. Now, whether I think that that's going to end in the employee's favor or the city's favor doesn't matter. My concern is that the entire nation is ready to grab onto this issue and bring it to the Massachusetts Supreme Court, to bring it to the Circuit Appeal Courts, to bring it all the way up to the Supreme Court. Now, even if we get to a point where it reaches the Supreme Court, if we could afford it, I don't believe that our Supreme Court is going to look at a situation like this and say, yeah, that person's religious liberty doesn't count. And...
I think, I think, oh.
So just one second.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think, before you answer, Owen, I think maybe if we look at the structure of the ordinance, we could clarify that, your question?
Yep.
Because what you'll see is violations is 6 dash, or 6.2331. So the section you mentioned is in 6-23.4, which precedes that. So a violation of that, in your scenario, would not actually be prosecuted under the violations which was preceding it. The section above, which is A, B, C, and D, that those sections are subject to the violation? Section 6-23.4 is not subject to that. And what I'll do is, after answering that, I'll defer to Counselors Ehr to make sure I have that correct.
That's exactly what I was going to say. As I think, as I, and I could try, the, so the way that this is constructed is almost kind of two pieces. One is the safe access, which is just 6-23.4, which basically talks about the protection of privacy and the capacity of the city agent to not furnish information. And then the violations section strictly applies to that. So the piece about, the piece about posting or sharing information or mandating the Health Department to make sure that they just post government-sanctioned information about consumer advisories, that's a separate part. And there's no, like, penalties for city employees for, I guess, doing that or not doing that. It's just information. It'd be like if we, if we during COVID had created an ordinance that, you know, for whatever reason, that the city had to share, like, mandated that the city had to share, like, CDC information. Like, that's what that's doing. There's no, there's not a, there's not a penalty for the reporting piece, just to clarify.
So this is, so in the most simplistic terms, the violations only apply if somebody within the city is interfering with someone's right to have access to reproductive care?
Yeah, like, so say your friend visits from some other state, for instance. And in that state, and they're here pursuing gender-affirming care or, you know, consulting for and seeking, you know, information about hormonal treatment. And employee Y has this information for whatever reason, either because it was disclosed to them through a conversation with this person or they found out about it. And employee Y either A, shares that information, which is basically a HIPAA violation, or calls the state that they came from where it's illegal and says, hey, when this person gets back, just so you know, they violated your state laws and, you know, you should notify law enforcement, et cetera. So that's all that violations section is. It's basically protection of people's right to, obviously, A, privacy around this information, but also kind of an extension of the, again, the MGL, which basically stipulates that, you know, people should be protected from wrongful prosecution or criminal enforcement from other states, wherever they're coming from. Does that clarify?
Yep, so then here's the only other follow-up question. Because this has kind of been what's at the root of an ordinance like this. You know, when we took the oath of office, we have to protect the institution of the city. And, you know, when I read the initial findings from our city solicitor, it looked like that would place East Hampton in irreparable financial harm. Just because there are people who would love to crowdsource funding to destroy initiatives like this. And as a city, we don't have the resources to combat external fundraisers. So let's say this goes into effect exactly as it's written. Do the, because it's my understanding, these laws that are being cited, these are the ones that were just recently passed at the state level, correct? So should somebody want to file a lawsuit for this ordinance, does the burden of defending it fall on the state? Or does it fall on East Hampton? Because that's a significant, you know, where I fall on this issue. Is I know that if East Hampton has to deal with this, then it would immediately be a no for me because I don't trust the hatred in people's hearts outside of East Hampton to do the right thing. They would do it just to inflict harm.
I mean, yeah, and I agree with you that I think people would, yeah. And I don't know, I mean, it's interesting, you know, we have, you know, Somerville passed their ordinance in, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll let know if I have an issue.
You know, Somerville passed their ordinance in March, and we haven't seen any action towards them. I mean, I think in anticipation of that conversation and in preparation for that, we have had conversations with the Lawyering Project, who is a nonprofit group who basically offers pro bono legal services to states municipalities around reproductive rights. And they are prepared to sign a memorandum of understanding with the city to basically cover all the services, which, you know, and basically obvi, kind of like, you know, remove that, remove the financial obligations of the city in that case. I can connect you with the person, Stephanie Toney, who I spoke with, who was more than willing to. And, you know, they, what would the word be? You know, kind of like unofficially reviewed all this language to, you know, in terms of, you know, would this be something that they would be willing to offer legal services for and defend? They said, absolutely. They actually offered some, you know, informal changes to the language which appear here. So yes, I mean, I agree with you. I think unfortunately, we're in a landscape where even with, you know, really ironclad language and just language, I mean, even if you look at just the fair access, it's basically just asking the city to post available information from the state level. Like, that's all it's doing, basically, and tell people, hey, if you have this issue, you can, you can, you can report this and here's how. But because this is such a hot-button topic, people are just lined up just to, you know, to bring frivolous lawsuits. But it wouldn't cost the city a cent, from my understanding, because we would have, we would have representation.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, that's really my, would be my only objection is, you know, that right now there isn't a problem in East Hampton to be solved for. And I would hate to incur any costs to combat bad actors that have nothing better to do than to go after communities. You know, and I think, you know, like you were saying before, when I read through this, there isn't anything in here that points towards the Bethlehem House, which is important to me. I think they have more than stated their case, and I've heard them. And I respect the work that they do. And I just want to make sure that when we do this, that everybody within our city limits is protected. Because that's what I care about the most, is making sure that we can enact fair ordinances where we're not introducing any more violence to our community and we're not opening ourselves up to financial loss. That's really it. From a philosophical standpoint, I support every single thing that's in here, so. Sorry.
Great, thank you. No, that's perfectly fine. That's what I expect from my members. So Counselors Ehr, a couple of things. So I read the Salem ordinance, and it seems like we were able to pull quite a bit out of the Salem ordinance that has passed and has not been challenged, correct?
Correct, yeah. You mean the safe access piece?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
And as part of the safe access piece, let's just say Rhode Island decided to make contraception illegal. And people were coming to Massachusetts to buy contraception. This would prevent any city employee from calling state officials or city officials in Rhode Island saying, this person was here buying contraception and you should stop them at the border?
Yeah, I mean, it would prevent them because, I mean, the deal would be done, but the person would be able to...
Disincentivize it?
Right. The person would be able to say, hey, you know, employee Y, like, did this, and, and, I mean, it's, look, the, it's, and there are bigger, I think there's bigger, there's bigger fines for a lot, or remedies on the state level, but at least not on a local level. They could go to Emily, to, or to the director of personnel and say, this happened. This person violated, so it's, so yes, but that's, that's what, that's what, yes.
All right, perfect. And it looks like, you know, the section 6-23.4, fair access, and section 6-23.51, reporting are two pieces that are an add-on to the Salem ordinance, basically?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the reworking.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, and that's the piece that covers the, what we would consider CPCs. So within this, I don't see anything where someone would be going around and trying to enforce this. Would there be someone in the city that would be going if there are CPCs beside, you know, including Bethlehem House in East Hampton where some, an enforcement agent would be going to make sure they were doing A, B, or C?
No, there's, it's, there's, there's zero oversight or enforcement from this language.
Okay. If someone had an issue and they made a complaint, is there someone from the city that would go talk to someone at the CPC?
No.
No?
No, we would just poke, the, the goal would just be that there's information there. There'd be information out there available that, that if people did want to make a complaint, they would hopefully know how to do it. But no, no one would, no one would, yeah, it's the health director, the, no one would, yeah.
So we, we would have no personnel that would be going to do anything?
Nope.
Would, if it was found that CPC did something wrong, would there be any penalty from the city?
No, that would be at the discretion of the Attorney General's office.
So basically, there's no enforcement component from the city?
Correct. This is more, like I said, creating, what this is doing is enjoining, enjoining all the work that's being done at the state level. And from my understanding, that's, that's going to continue to be done at the state level with the Haley Driscoll administration and now AG Lepp Campbell to really start, you know, offering a lot more protections around this. This is just kind of creating a conduit, you know, from the municipality to the state because, you know, it, it, it's facilitating and empowering people in the city to be able to understand, you know, these issues and, and get, get word to the state level. Again, I keep using the equivalent of our, our wage theft ordinance, because I think that's, that's the best thing. But yeah, there's no, there's no enforcement, there's no fines. I mean, someone could come to the health director or, or the police and say, this happened to me. But there, there's, we literally have no power here to, to really do anything about it.
And the, I guess, I have a couple more. If someone did have an issue and they made a complaint, would that complaint may be made public in some way that, you know, members of the community would know that the CPC in East Hampton did something that was considered to be a violation of this?
On a local level?
Yeah, like, would, would we publish it on a website? Would we, you know?
No, again, it's really just, this is really more just like an education, information, and facilitation.
Okay, so, so no?
So no.
Okay. And is there a way right now, if someone had an issue with CPC, to report that to the state?
There is.
So at the end of the day, basically, what it would, the, the whole point of the ordinance would be if someone had a complaint and they went through the process to lodge that complaint with the health department, the health department would say, you have a place to file that complaint, and that's pretty much it, other than posting what I think is probably a pretty common thing, to post health advisories on, on their bulletin board?
Yeah, basically, the health department would, would have available the forms or be able to tell them where to go. And then, yeah, yeah, but correct. It's not, the, the health department or health agents aren't, they themselves filing the complaints. It's, they're just, they're, they're making them available. Again, it's, yeah, they're making them available.
Okay. And so, and, and basically, the whole thing that would, that would cause someone to potentially lodge a complaint with the health department, which then they would be told to go to a website or file a complaint somewhere else, would be if a limited services pregnancy center made or disseminated before the public or caused to be made or disseminated before the public in any newspaper or other publication through any advertising device or in any other manner, including but not limited to through the use of internet, any statement concerning any pregnancy-related service. And pregnancy-related service is a fairly narrow scope, right, as defined in the definition?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or it's, or it's provision of any pregnancy-related service that is deceptive, whether by statement or omission, and that limited services pregnancy center knows or reasonably should know to be deceptive. So if someone said, hey, I felt like that was deceptive, they go to the health agent, she says, well, or she now, says, well, you can file a report here, and there was a, you know, advisory by the attorney general, you can see that there. And that, that's it?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, my goal would be like on the web-
So this is different than what was before?
Oh, yeah, a hundred times. Yeah, yeah. I mean, my, my goal would be to hope that there'd be a section on the website that would be specifically related to, you know, reproductive and gender-affirming care that people could click on, and it gives them all this information. I mean, I, I don't, I can't get into too much because it's not on the agenda, but there's other items within that toolkit, which I think could, could end up falling, you know, into there at some point. But yeah, this is just more, because to be, so, and just to be clear, people will say, why don't you pass a resolution? Well, a resolution's not binding. So you can pass a resolution tomorrow that says, we would like the health department to do that. They'll say, thank you very much. But this, you know, this, this is like, this is almost like a binding resolution, I'd say. Because it's not really creating any, we're not, we're not, to your point, Mr. Chair, we're not creating any enforcement. We're not really requiring the health department to really do anything other than point people to information.
Okay. I mean, those are the only questions I had.
And then the other thing I'd like to point out too, you know, because I think, I think some people may say this, well, what if in the next, what if in the next administration, the, all these advisories go away? Or some of these advisories go away? Well, you know, there's a severability clause. So if there's no advisories to post, and also there's no, there's no complaint form to the ajib ascend, well, then it's moot. So you can't set a form that doesn't exist, and you can't post advisories that don't exist. And so it kind of like, it's kind of like, you know, kind of like cancels itself out, I guess, for lack of a better term.
I get that. Any other questions, Counselor Allen?
No, I just, I just want to say that this is a marked improvement over the original ordinance. I think it addresses a lot of the initial concerns that I had. And, you know, I think, and, uh, I guess this is more of a question for you. So let's say we vote tonight, I'm not saying that we are, but let's say that we did. Is the next step to send this to this solicitor to approve?
Yeah, and that's at the discretion of the president.
No, that's okay. I, I just want to make sure that there, somebody else is taking a final look at this because, you know, my training is in public administration.
You haven't got your law degree yet?
No, I, exactly, exactly. And they, these are, you know what I mean? These are some, it's a very complex, organic policy area that's changing a lot around us. So it looks okay to me.
And I would agree that it's a complex topic. I would say that this is relatively simple, and it seems relatively straightforward, which I like better than the last one, because that was a little convoluted.
I completely agree with you.
Yeah. Counselor Zaret, did you have something else before I start opening it up?
Well, yeah, just the one thing I want to say, a couple of things. Like first, so first of all, is, you know, this, this language as it exists was, you know, had eyes on it from other legal, from other, other legal experts. So, you know, Reproductive Equity Now's, Legal Department, Fundary Advocacy Fund, the Women's Law Project. And then, as I mentioned, you know, not in the, not in the capacity of a, of a client relationship, but, but the Lawyering Project did kind of give it an official look-over too, to look at some of the language. And what I would recommend is if we get to the point where we want to refer this to solicitor, because of the, the really specialized nature of this, I would highly, highly, highly recommend that he, he review it in consultation with the person from the Lawyering Project, because that's their specialty. That would, you know, I, I think that, especially if they're going to agree to, you know, participate in some of the work around us. So that would be just my suggestion.
Fair enough. And so I, I think that, before I open it to the public, okay, good. So I'm happy to open it up to the public now. So just make sure that, you know, address, address the committee. Try to get it around three minutes, if you can. And my, my final request is if you can keep it as close, your comments as close to the scope and the, you know, the content of the ordinance, that would be ideal. You know, like, I know everybody has really strong opinions potentially about these topics. Really, in order to preserve time and to make our work a little bit more manageable, it would be great if we had specific feedback on the language. That would be helpful. So if you can do that, I would be very appreciative.
I'll do my best.
And make sure you say your name and your address for the record, too.
Sure. My name is Bob Sasse. My address is 3 Windsor Circle in East Hampton. First of all, I've had an opportunity to attend a lot of meetings since July and learn a lot. So thank you. It's been a good education. I also want to congratulate the ordinance committee because as I understood it from the last city council meeting, you went through every ordinance.
We did.
And you struck out the ones that were not necessary. If you wonder why I'm holding this, I'm not going to break into tears, I'm just, I cut my hand right before I left. One of the ordinances that I found really funny was the skinny-dipping ordinance. And you decided to eliminate that ordinance because the state law covers that. There's no, you don't need duplicity in law. Why are you creating duplicity in law in this? That's the question I ask. Granted, Salem has adopted it, Somerville's adopted other wording, neither of which have a pregnancy crisis center in their boundaries. A couple of times tonight I heard refer to reproductive equity now. Am I correct, Owen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I, I didn't know anything about reproductive equity now. You know who introduced reproductive equity now to me at my house one morning at 8:30? The FBI. Because when we had the vandalism, I said, well, how in the hell do they know about, well, this list from reproductive equity now is the go-list for the vandalism at all the pregnancy crisis centers. So we can thank reproductive equity now for putting a target on our back.
Hey, Bob, I'll give you an extra minute if you talk to the specifics of the ordinance.
You decided to eliminate the skinny-dipping ordinance because you didn't need it. You don't need this either. You're also attempting to codify into law something that's an advisory that's not currently a law. So you're cour, you're coursing new casework and new courts work within the legal system that the Commonwealth hasn't even done yet through the advisory. One of the things that I've mentioned since the day that I spoke is the financial exposure to the city. You know that First Liberty has been retained and has already gone on record, it's public information, a letter to Morah Haley, acting as the attorney general on the advisory. As soon as you codify it into law, then you move from an advisory to law to become a target. And if, if Owen feels comfortable, you don't mind if I call you Owen instead of Counselor Owen, feels comfortable that this other law firm is going to defend the city, then the prudent thing would be to have a letter of identification of the city of East Hampton in any legal actions with this. Otherwise, you're taking a tremendous risk that could and will cost the city a lot of money.
Okay. You've got 20 seconds.
This reads like a resolution, not a law.
Okay, thank you. And again, if you want to just state your name and address for the record?
I'm Judith Cross. I'm an attorney practicing in the Springfield area, but I am also a ward member of Clearway Clinic, which is a pregnancy resource center that fall under your definition. And it's a, and it's also medically licensed clinic by the state of Massachusetts. So I just have a few issues, some of the legal issues in viewing the ordinance that I'd like to bring to your attention, something that you certainly can explore with the, the city council, the city solicitor. First of all, the language in this still represents constitutionally for pivoted viewpoint and content discrimination. Why? Counselor Zaret's letter was very clear that his only advisors in this, in, in comparing this new language and this new ordinance, his advisors were all abortion advocates. So there was, at the start, no balance. Secondly, you still have a definition of limited pregnancy service centers included in this ordinance, which specifically targets pro-life pregnancy centers that do not prefer or provide abortion-related services, whether it's a pill, whether it's, or contraceptive services. So it's, it's, from the outset, that hasn't changed. It's still targeting pro-life centers who have two constitutionally protected, are protected under the First Amendment. One, for because of free speech in terms of their content. But secondly, because these resource centers are motivated by their belief, their faith belief, that all human life is, is entitled to protection regardless of its development and where it is in its development. And the fact that he didn't even consider talking with Bethlehem House, speaking with any, there's plenty of pro-life advocacy groups that would have been happy to have sat down to talk with him. And to my knowledge, Counselor Zaret has never asked to come down and visit Clearway Clinic. We'd be happy to show, give them the tour and explain what it is that we do there. And it's about, we, what we do is truly about empowerment and choices, because we give the whole picture. Secondly, the preamble and findings still contain that undefined vague language, deceptive advertising, practices, and false claims, which are only, can be used and alleged against limited services pregnancy centers, which do not provide any access to abortion, abortion services, or contraceptives. Thirdly, the findings do incorporate the consumer, the advisory against the PRCs, which, which Mr. Sasse indicated has been challenged. The, the PRCs, most of the PRCs in Massachusetts are represented by a national law firm. So we've already challenged that, and it, you know, now that we know that we have this new administration coming in, which is being led by the, now soon to be former attorney general, one can assume, just as Counselor Zaret said, that the state is going to move forward and enact something else, whether it's the million dollars to, to, to inform the public about all these new reproductive and gender-affirming rights, or whether she's going to go forward with her campaign against pregnancy resource centers. But please, be, you know, be it known that we are in a position, pregnancy resource centers, to, to take action against those, those, those claims.
Okay, so I'll give you an extra minute?
So, and, and we already, the state laws already exist, as, as Counselor Zaret said. They already exist in terms of protecting, protecting our residents from the very actions that you're talking about. You know, I'd like to ask, if you're talking about the burden of defending, and it's very nice that you now have a, a, a pro, you know, a pro bono firm that's willing to take, to defend the city against these suits. But if you get, if there's a judgment against you, who's going to pay the judgment? It's not going to be the state, not unless there's some state law that's enacted in the next few years that says that they will indemnify the city for, it's your law, you passed it. So you're responsible for your law and your ordinance. passed it, so you're responsible for your law and your ordinances. So, that's the question you need to ask yourself, is who's going to pay the judgment? Because there are very big judgments in these cases. I can give you a listing of some of the, of some of the millions in money. So, you've got to ask yourself that.
Okay, so I'm going to stop you there, and I'm going to just see if anybody else wants to speak. And I will let people speak again, but I just want to kind of, you know, keep things moving along. So, if anybody else would like to...
I was going to speak, but I'm willing to give my time to Judy, because I think what she's saying is very important.
Okay.
So, I will waive her mic, three minutes or whatever, so she can continue, because I'm learning a lot myself here.
You guys are all set?
Well, I would like to speak, but...
Why don't you go ahead, and just make sure you state your name and your address for the record.
Sandra Zaninski, from South Cleveland, Mass.
Can you do me a favor and spell your last name?
You always ask that. It's like advertising, like, who are you? Z as in zebra, I.E., M.I.N.S.K.I.
Thank you.
I just want to agree with the two previous speakers. I've lived long enough. This is absolutely fodder for lawyers and the courts, period, the end. It's twists and turns of the words, and it's going to end up in a court situation. And as they previously have stated, if you have a format already for a formal complaint and you reach out to the state, why do you have to interject another level, which is going to put you at a disadvantage, possibly? So, I just don't see the course of this making a lot of sense. And it was stated that this ordinance probably would not reflect on Bethlehem House. How about putting there, it would not have any reason of recourse with the Bethlehem House? And that's, thank you for the time.
You're welcome. And I think I can, I can probably answer that a little bit. So, the answer to that is, from everything that we have found out about the Bethlehem House, that they are not doing anything that's deceptive, or that is, you know, that would make them fall under the auspices of this umbrella. However, if the, if there was a change in the leadership and someone decided to maybe, "Hey, we have a great reputation, and we do good things for the community, we're going to leverage that to try to, you know, do things that maybe aren't as on the level," then that's where it could, that's why you wouldn't say, "We're going to, we're going to give you a free pass no matter what," because things change. You know, whoever's running it changes. All of these factors can, are variable. So, that's why we wouldn't codify that, you know, in a law. But, and I just want to, before I let people speak again, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. So, everybody that has spoken so far has no objection with the first section of this. What you all are concerned about is 6-23.4 and 6-23.5, which is the part that talks about, that's not true?
We have no objection with 6, with the preamble and the findings, and...
Well, that's what I'm asking you, is, you know, as we look at this, the only part of the ordinance, you know, the preamble and the findings are not, are not actionable under the, they're not law.
Definitions are.
Well, the definitions are, but you said the preamble and findings.
Right.
And so, the preamble and findings are not part of the law. So, I want to just make sure, when we're talking about the ordinance that we're looking at here, the section that you have an issue with, besides the definition, is the fair axis, which is 6-23.4 and 6-23.5.1.
It's still, I guess I do. I do still have a problem with that, but my other issue is, in terms of, in terms of the beginning, your preamble, even though you're dismissing it, you've included it for a purpose. It has a purpose. And you're establishing what the basis is, as to why you want to then, you want to then have this ordinance and pass this ordinance. So, that is your, that's the intent part of this that is very important if a court's going to be looking at it. They want to see, what is your intent? And your intent is very clearly stated between Counselor Zaret's letter and your preamble and your findings. But the other part is, there's also your, the enforcement, which was raised by Commissioner, by Commissioner, was it Healy?
Riley.
Riley, I'm sorry.
Counselor Riley.
I know, I'm the governor. Commissioner Riley. But the court is, what happens to, what happens on the part of employee that may want to, that refuses to pass out these findings? I guess my question to you would be, who, if someone comes to one of the health officer with a complaint, you are saying that Bethlehem House is probably not under the, probably not under the auspices of this ordinance, then who are they going to complain about? Which means, are you anticipating that they, you're going to be getting people complaining about Clearway Clinic in Springfield, because we offer, we offer people access to the abortion reversal process? Or that we offer ultrasounds? Or that we offer prenatal and parental counseling? So, if somebody has a complaint against us, or alternatives in Greenfield, which offers, which offers counseling, post-abortive counseling, or any of the other pregnancy centers in Western Mass, which, which provide a variety of services, are you saying that you're going to take that complaint? So, you're going out of the...
Absolutely. I would say, absolutely.
So, you want to, you want to extend this ordinance to, what, the rest of the state?
I think, because there's no enforcement provision, I think that, yeah, it would be no, I think that anybody that, in the City of East Hampton, any resident of the City of East Hampton, that had an experience, whether it was in the City of East Hampton or outside of the City of East Hampton, could talk to the health director and be counseled to, you know, what their recourse would be, which is to file a complaint with the state.
This steps aside the residence.
Hold on, hold on, wait to be recognized, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I just want, does that make sense?
No, it makes absolute sense. It's exactly how I would interpret it, which is why it's very problematic, because...
So, well, excuse me, hold on.
Let me just say something. If that's the case, then what this is prohibiting, is prohibiting, is, is saying the deceptive advertising practices and false claims, you are preventing your residents from complaining about their treatment at Planned Parenthood, and the fact that they wouldn't have, give them an ultrasound until they have their abortion scheduled.
So, I'm going to hold you there. I'm going to, I'm going to hold you there, and just be aware that you need to, you need to be recognized by me to speak.
Yes.
Okay? And so, if I ask you to stop, I'm going to just ask for you to stop. And I will recognize whoever needs to be recognized. But I just want to say that, you know, the city, if this was, and, you know, I'm agnostic to this at this point, but I do want to try to, as the chair, I need to be able to, like, envision how this would work, and the way that I see it, and, you know, with my 20 years of experience of being the chair of the ordinance committee, this does not, the city does not really do anything in this scenario, other than say, there is a place where you can file a complaint, which I don't see as the city taking really any sort of action beyond what a reasonable person would be able to do on their own. So, when you say the city is doing this, the city is preventing, you know, people from submitting complaints against Planned Parenthood, or anybody, you know, this is the city just saying, there is a place to be able to file a complaint, which I imagine, if they had a complaint against any organization that would be covered under the auspices of health and public safety, that the health director would say. And I think, you're right, like, right now, the Bethlehem House does not fall under the auspices of this. It's, and again, that's, just because Amy's place isn't being, like, actively prosecuted for serving underage kids, doesn't mean that they would never serve underage kids. Like, it's, it's just, and, and we wouldn't pass a law saying, "You don't need to card people anymore, because we trust you and we think that you're doing good work." And, and, you know, I think that this, as the way I see it, this could be one other layer of saying, "Trust, but verify." And, you know, and, you know, again, I'm agnostic to this. I'm going to, I'm going to weigh both sides of this as equally as I can, but I'm just trying to make sense of this right now. So, I just want to put that out there, and, and Mr. Sasse, I know that you had your hand raised, I'll defer to you, and then if you have other comments, I'd happily go back to you.
Well, first of all, if you read this in detail, it not only is meant to be protection for the city, the residents of the City of East Hampton, but anybody that happens to be in East Hampton at the time, because you talk about out-of-state or out-of-area visitors. So, I think that's an important consideration. The second thing that I just, there is a vehicle, that if somebody is deceptively handled, there ready is a vehicle whereby their default is to go to the Attorney General of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Okay? If you have a, really what you're talking about is breakdown in HIPAA, because you, you know, you can't report that Sandy wanted to get an abortion, but you can't get an abortion via HIPAA, because it's health-protected information. But if a resident in the City of East, or somebody working for the city was being restricted or pushed off or not supported in the nature of this, there's already a vehicle. So, aren't we confusing activity with achievement? Don't things already exist, just like the laws of skinny dipping? Why, why are we recreating the wheel? And where I struggle is, you're recreating the wheel and you're putting a target on your back for legal action. And the legal action that Judy spoke with, yes, there is the cost of defense, but then there's damages, okay? And they're usually the cost of, the other party's cost of defense plus some, and that's how they get the, you know, to get, go to federal court is millions of dollars. Okay? So, the city better be darn sure that they have a letter of identification by whatever law firm that's going to handle this for them, okay? That's as locked tight as the wording that you've got here, or you're putting the city at something they can't defend themselves on. When we, when we argue over $400,000 for this school, and $400,000 in a federal lawsuit is gone for you now.
Okay. Thanks. Counsel Riley.
Yes, so I just wanted to address one point that you brought up, and that is, yes, the mechanisms already exist at the state level. It is my interpretation that what this seeks to do is to advocate that that system exists. So, if someone doesn't know that the processes exist, how would they know to access them? And, you know, what I, I think the reason why this is important to kind of contextualize is, this is, it's starting to turn into a mass migration system, where we have people from Midwestern and Southern states who are now coming to Massachusetts because we have offered a, if you want to call it a safe haven law, right? That says, you can come here, you can access these services, and we will not report to the state that you came from that you did so. It's important for us to be able to have a mechanism for advocating that that process exists, because there are people who are coming to this state who don't understand all of the mechanisms that are at play. So, I think it's really valuable that we would have our health department to be able to provide that information, not to make any other determinations, other than to say, "Here is the process that exists for reporting this kind of information." So, yes, it already exists, but I think it's important for people to, to know what options they have available to them at the state level.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. So, I'm going to go with Counselor Zaret in a moment, but I do have one question for you before we go, and then I'll go back to the public. I do. So, for, in this, you included the preamble and the findings within the ordinance. That's not typical. Generally, that is going to be a cover letter, a resolution to be read before the ordinance gets passed. Is that your intention, or just because there's a lot of things that are dated, there's hyperlinks, it doesn't necessarily, it seems like this is information that's good context, but it doesn't seem like it's information that would generally go within the body of an ordinance?
Well, I mean, as you, we don't typically do it here, but as you know, you know, other cities do kind of like have, like, either a preamble or findings. And I felt in this case, it was, it was important to establish some of that, to explain the rationale behind why we want to make sure that we're providing this information to people.
Okay.
Especially, you know, the touch on what Counsel Riley said, you know, that not fortunately as much in this community, but certainly in this community, there is a broad swath of marginalized populations that are typically find themselves in situations where they are seeking certain kinds of reproductive health care and find themselves because, in centers that they did not intend to go to because of deceptive advertising practices. And, you know, that's more typically in the BIPOC community and lower-income communities, but it certainly could happen here. And it certainly could happen, again, to the, the mass migration term, I think was wonderful, is that, you know, Massachusetts is, will, or probably already is, a safe haven state for a variety of reproductive health care services. I mean, and the gender-affirming piece is very important here, too, because as we all know, there are states now where you, if you, if you have any desire to explore your gender, that could be illegal. You know, we have "Don't Say Gay" in Florida, and Texas, you could be punished for identifying as trans. And so, you know, I think it's important, it's, it was just, I just felt that it was important to establish, and also to, again, to talk about these consumer advisories, again, to establish basis for why the state has a vested interest in both protecting people's access to care, but also their knowledgeable access to care. Because the stories are out there, the research is out there, there's both independent studies, as well as government-funded studies that have demonstrated the deceptive advertising practices, or else we wouldn't be there, be here having this conversation. So, and to respond to the comments before, if someone wants to bring a series of studies before this body that demonstrates with accurate peer-reviewed data or government-funded studies about the deceptive advertising of Planned Parenthood, I'd be more than happy to review it.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go, and just make sure you say your name and address for the record.
Yeah. I'm Heather, and it's 33 number of East Hampton. So, my question is to you.
Counsel Riley.
Counselor Riley.
Riley?
Yep.
You said that, so, if a mom comes into the state to abort her child, she, and they seal her records? Is that what, so she has the abortion, and then the records are sealed? So, if she has difficulty after this, they can't get into those records to help her out to see, like, an infection comes in? You mean, they can't get into her records to see that she had the abortion, this is what's causing the infection, now she does? Is that what I'm getting from you? They are not allowed to get into those records in any way, like a doctor couldn't call back into the state and get into the records?
I'm going to, I'll just stop it there. I don't think that that's the case, but I also don't think that that is necessarily relevant, relevant to the ordinance we're talking about right now.
I just needed, I just was wondering if that's what you meant.
I, I, I understand your, but unfortunately, it's not relevant to what we're talking about at this moment.
Well, it is, because we're talking about lawsuits, and East Hampton could get sued for somebody dying.
But this, that's outside of the scope of this ordinance, so. Mr. Sasse, did you have, oh, Counsel Riley?
I was just going to say, that's a, that's a state-level law, and I...
It is.
Like I said, I don't understand the nuances, because I'm not trained.
It's a new law, is what you're saying.
Yes.
They can seal the records if someone comes into the state.
That's general... That's, generally speaking, is my understanding, that it means that physicians and law enforcement officers cannot contact other states and say, this is a person who came here from your state, they had an abortion. Beyond what else that means, I don't, I don't know. I just know that there is, there are laws at the state level that are new, that create those protections. I don't know if anybody else has...
Just for the record, that is not included in this ordinance.
That's not, no. And so, and so I'm going to just, I'm just going to put that, let's put that aside.
Yes.
And so, and then what I'll do is I'll go, Mr. Sasse, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I, I think I've said all that I'm going to say.
Okay. And does anybody else have anything they would like to say before we wrap this up? We're not making any decisions tonight, so we're still missing, missing Counselor Peak, who I think deserves to be in this discussion before we make any sort of decisions. And there's some, you know, hearing some more information, I think would be good for us to be able to make an informed decision. But please, again, just state your name, and he probably has the spelling this time.
Sandra Zeminski. You got it?
Yes.
I just have to reflect on what Pamela said, even though it doesn't involve the ordinance per se. That's how convoluted and complex this can all turn out to be. Put that aside. If you already have a platform, and I already said this, to go to the state, if you have a complaint, why are you putting East Hampton at risk? If you want to inform the public, and I've worked in public health for 21 years, you have a campaign, you get that information out. Now, if someone came and wanted to file a complaint now, and they went to the Board of Health, because we used to get lots of complaints, now they would, at that point, could resource them to the state without this ordinance.
Yeah, they could.
Okay. But we want to inform the people, so just like they have the anti-smoking campaign that you, the state should be giving out, or funding money for a campaign, without making all these laws that we're going to end up in the courts and costing people money. And I know one thing, taxpayers have deep pockets. Period. The end.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Zarett, do you want to...
Yeah, I guess something that I might be missing, and, and I, but I don't know if I am, because I, you know, a lot of these, these things were reviewed as we were developing this language, literally this all, I mean, I think that, you know, this is very similar to what happened at the state level, where they, they legislated, they legislated a public health campaign around this issue. And we're just basically requiring the health department to share information, to basically have that campaign.
Have it posted.
Right. That's, that's really all. We're just asking, we're just requiring the posting of available government, government information. We're not doing anything else or taking any other action, so.
Last call.
Last call. Bob Sasse.
Go ahead, Bob.
Why, why a law? Why a law?
That's, that's the question we're going to have to answer, so.
Why a law? You spend a lot of time cleaning up these ordinances. Now you're putting more stuff on there that's duplicit of things that already exist. If you want to have a campaign, if you want to alert the public, putting an ordinance in place does not alert the public. I, I don't know, you know, maybe you guys sit with ordinances too long, but there are no lights that flash when you're driving through town. New ordinance in East Hampton, make everybody known about it, it just, it doesn't happen. So why a law? Okay? When you don't need a law, number one.
Okay. Just for information, there used to be a town crier that would stand, they'd have a bell in. East Hampton was a very anti-alcohol, and there was, alcohol was driven from East Hampton in the 1800s, and it was kind of interesting, you know? So, anyway, thank you all for participating. Thank you, Counselor Zarett, for sharing this with us. Thank you, Counselor Riley. Unless we have any other business, I'm going to entertain, oh, yeah.
I would just say, if you have, if you have, I think all the questions that were asked are really good, from both the public and the members of the committee. I'm happy to, you know, connect you with some of the people involved, especially, you know...
Maybe we can get somebody to come in and talk, come in and talk for our next meeting, which we'll have to, I think it'll probably be after the New Year, just, just because it's going to start amping up and my leg is starting to work again, so I'm going to be busy, because I can, I can almost walk without my brace. So I would, because I'm sure everybody's interested in that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
All right, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, I'm going to second that, all those in favor.
I...
Motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.